Let's call a meeting order. Roll call.
Ms. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
Roger, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There was no previous executive session to report. Next up is the recognition showcase, school board recognition.
Yes. Well, thank you. And for those of you that aren't aware, January is School Director Recognition Month. So tonight, we would like to recognize our nine school directors who volunteer their time to serve our students, school, and community. Prior to the winter break, Mr. Trukaski shared with us the work that he has done to preserve the beautiful slate blackboards and wood trim from the original high school building. In honor of the work that you all do, the administrative cabinet and I would like to present each of you with a Boyertown High School old building commemorative slate plaque. I have these here, but each of you will be receiving one of the commemorative plaques. And let's see where. The plaque was made from a 1921 slate chalkboard that was removed from the old building in 2015. The wood base was made from chestnut wood that surrounded each chalkboard. This wood was salvaged from the old building during the 2016 renovation. We are honored to work with you and appreciate all you do for the Boyertown community. We also would like to recognize our student board reps, Lexi and Liliana, for the work that they had done over the past year, and you have a small gift from us in front of you. So thank you to everyone for your service, and I'm going to pass these out and around. Inside is the piece of wood that the plaque will sit in. Sits very nicely. And then on the back, there is some information about the slate and the wood as well. So our appreciation. I'm good. Yeah, you can pass them down to the... One, two, three. There's a third one. And then this one is for you. And then that one goes your direction. Okay, I said all the way over. I didn't get any for our... Just the board. Did you get yours? Did you keep yours?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to hand over the microphone for our BASH senior recognition.
Okay, so the microphone's on. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. You sure?
Positive.
Okay. So I'm not.
Okay.
I'm a nervous wreck, to be honest. I do this at least once a month. We've talked about that. I stand here in front of a group of people and tell great stories about our students, our team, and our community. I have said repeatedly that this is the best part of my job, and I mean that. I've talked about some amazing programs and projects. I've met some amazing people. I've celebrated those stories with pride and joy and have even shed some happy tears, which we've also talked about. But tonight does feel different, like I have a bigger responsibility. I can't mess this one up. I need to get it just right. You deserve my absolute best storytelling tonight. You have earned my respect. I am proud of you, and we just met last week for 30 minutes. You are a remarkable young lady. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Allison Moyer, Communication Specialist for Boyertown Area School District, and this is Rowan Diner. Rowan is a senior at BASH. She is part of our gifted program and a talented art student. She especially loves drawing and painting using media such as acrylics, oils, and watercolors. She's an advanced placement psychology student. She is considering art therapy as a possible career goal, and she and her friends have been discussing plans for possible senior week trip after graduation. In case you didn't know that, Mom and Dad, just saying. Okay? So, like I said, we just met last Thursday, and there is a room full of people here tonight as part of Rowan's cheering section. Rowan's name crossed my desk several months ago when Mr. Darinow, one of our art teachers at BASH, who is with us tonight, sent a message to the admin team at BASH highlighting Rowan. The email was forwarded to me for consideration for a recognition showcase. To be honest, it took me a little bit to reach out to Rowan. Then she took a bit. Then I took a while longer. And as I said, we finally met last week. We were together for 30 minutes, and I literally have not stopped talking about her since. I never share spotlight stories ahead of time, not with Mary Beth or Mike or with any board members. I don't tell anybody what's happening, and I cannot shut up about this kid. Okay? Without ever leaving BASH, I went straight to Mrs. Bramble's room. She's also with us tonight. I shared your story with five ladies. An email had been sent to the boy's family. We had plans for your cheering section, and I could not wait for tonight to come. I got back to the Edge Center and shared your story with Mrs. Torsha, who has also shared your story since that time. Emails have flown fast and furious. I have invited people to watch tonight's board meeting specifically to hear your story, and there are plans for other organizations to feature you and members of our team in upcoming social media posts and more. It's kind of taken on a life of its own. Ready to share your story?
Yeah.
Okay. Once upon a time, or at least way back in August, Rowan arrived at BASH ready to begin her final year of high school. A review of her schedule showed that she had seventh period open campus, basically study hall. She went to her first several open campus meetings and discovered she didn't know very many people in that time. She has a love for art, so she reached out to Mr. Darinow and asked Mr. Darinow if she could spend seventh period working on projects in his room. He said, "Sure, but..."
He had a class with the special ed students, and I was like, "Sure, I'll come down. I'll see what that's all about." And I didn't know that I was going to be staying for the entire semester and then go on to do an internship with Mr. Valick for his tech ed, special education class.
So as I mentioned earlier, on November 14th, Mr. Darinow sent an email. This is just a part of what he had to say. When she first came and met the life skills class, I think she was a little overwhelmed because during seventh period, Mr. Darinow teaches, taught adaptive art during the first semester. So I think she was a little overwhelmed. This was not a population that she was used to spending time with. After the first class, she said she was glad she came down. She said that she had always seen these students in the hall, and she felt nervous around them. And when I talked to Rowan the first time last Thursday, she's like, "I stood there. I didn't know what to say. I didn't know what to do. I didn't know how to act." But she stayed. I was really impressed when she asked if she could continue to keep coming down to work with them. I think this experience has been positive for both Rowan and the students. One of the aides told me that not only Rowan, but many of Rowan's friends will stop and talk to the life skills kids in the hallway. She went from wanting more time on her assignments to making friends and breaking down barriers in our school. I'm extremely proud of her. At the time of that email, Mr. Darinow didn't even know the half of it. The first semester came to an end, and Rowan was scheduled to take an art class during seventh period second semester, a weaving class. Remember, arts are passion. She's interested in pursuing art therapy as a career moving forward, and it's a very strong part of her future dreams. She dropped the course. Why?
I dropped the course because I couldn't just leave in the middle of the year. I had to keep working with these students. I fell in love with them, and I figured I would take the initiative and get an internship with Mr. Valick.
And that is exactly what she did. So I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. When we talked on Thursday, you shared some really neat things, not only about the kiddos who are with us this evening, but also about your experiences with the paras. And when you told the stories, I don't know if you realize this, but one of the things that struck me about Thursday is that when you told the stories, every time you tell the stories, your face lights up, and you have beautiful dimples that you don't see when you're just sitting and talking to you in general. You're mild-mannered, you're quiet, and then you start to talk. So can you tell a little bit about your experiences with Neil and Nathan?
Yes. So Neil and Nathan are right here. They're twins. I just, I fell in love working with them. They are, they're so sweet. I just love spending time with them. Hi, Neil. Hi, buddy. I love communicating with them because they are nonverbal. So I've learned sign language and how, and just getting to know their personalities because they are twins, but they are very, very different. And it's just fun to work with them. Little, it's little wins, just like coloring on paper. Like today in tech ed, we were hammering nails. We're making like string art. So we're hammering nails into blocks of wood, and Nathan did amazing with that. Neil, Neil might do a little bit more work, right? But...
He's like, "What are you talking about?"
But Nathan, Nathan did amazing today, and we're so proud of him. And I just, I love, I love, it's just the little things, the little wins with them. I love it. Yes, Neil!
Exactly. Exactly.
Perfect timing, buddy.
So I need to go back and reiterate that standing before you is a senior in high school who gave up time for her passions to pursue an internship with kiddos who need her. And one of the things she said to me when we talked about her giving up that weaving class, because she doesn't get why I'm making such a big fuss. She just truly doesn't. But she's like, "I would have missed them. I would have missed their paras. They've become part of my day." Right? Told you I was gonna cry.
The best part of my day.
The best part of your day. And as a matter of fact, on the day we met, the twins left early. One of them was sick. Okay? And so she had seen them. You had seen Neil sitting in the office, right? She had seen Neil sitting in the office, and I said, "Yeah, Neil was in the office, and I'm going home sick." And she's like, "Well, what am I gonna do seventh period?"
Yeah. They're my favorites to work with.
Yeah. All right. I've made it this far. I don't promise to make it any further. Okay? I know you don't understand what all fuss is about. But you need to know that you inspire me to be kinder, gentler, more compassionate human being. I could talk to you for hours and learn so much from you. We had so much fun that day. You are courageous and compassionate, humble, and wise beyond your years. You are an incredible young woman, and you have made an impact on me, but more importantly, on Neil, Nathan, Mia, Morgan, and countless others. And you're just getting started. So as part of my job, I have a small token of appreciation from the district. Thank you for all you do to enrich the lives of those around you. And I'm going to ask for everyone's indulgence because there's just one more thing. You know that I'm the mom of a special education student at BASH. We've talked about that. As the parent of a special needs child, you dream of your child meeting kiddos like you. Sorry, who are willing to open their hearts. Thank you. On behalf of all the parents like me across this district, go forth and continue to do great things. Can I give you a hug? You're welcome. So thank you to Mr. Darinow, Mrs. Bramble, Mr. Valick, Mia, Kathy Marini's here, and the whole family coming along. Two sets of identical twins. It's crazy. That's crazy to me. So, and thank you for indulging my emotions and giving me time to celebrate Rowan. So, thanks, guys.
You're an amazing young lady, Rowan, to have, you know, not just gone into a classroom that you were unfamiliar with, but then to, you know, just stick with it beyond, you know, the semester that you, you thought you were going to be there. And you may be finding something else to be filling up your time, not necessarily that, you know, you won't go the direction that you wish to go and go into teaching, but you'll forever be able to support students and adults who need, you know, that TLC. And so we do appreciate you. We celebrate you, and thank you for opening the eyes of many, for sure. Congratulations.
I have one quick question. You gonna change your major?
Um, I don't know, but I am considering different things now that I've experienced a class with them.
Be an amazing teacher.
My, my mom is a teacher, so maybe I get it from her.
Before we, anyone else, I'm sorry, I should have asked that. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, because it does take a special heart to warm up to children like that. And that's from a van driver who does it. So thank you. It is special.
All right, it's just gonna take us a second to go ahead and exit. Hey, buddy. Be ready to go out. Ready to go? Of course. We're gonna sneak out that door. We'll go down that hallway.
I have to say, all the times I've been at the high school, I've never seen these two young men so still.
Is it on? Okay. So, "Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. Tonight, we'll be sharing some recent BASH news and events with plans to hold another high school luncheon next month."
To begin, we would like to highlight Louis Maradiaga, a sixth grader at Middle School East. Louis was recently diagnosed with an inoperable brain tumor, DIPG. To support Louis and his family, please consider purchasing a t-shirt featuring artwork by Louis or supporting their GoFundMe. T-shirts can be purchased at miracleforlewis.cheddarup.com.
We want to take the time to thank student council for all their efforts in making the holidays even more magical with Wish Week. Our personal favorite wish of the month was a student receiving a whole watermelon. A lot of planning and budgeting goes into this event, and members certainly were busy, so we thank all of them.
On January 20th, BASD welcomed the Harlem Wizards, thanks to the support of the Foundation for Boyertown Education. We would like to thank the Harlem Wizards, FBE, and all of our star staff team for putting together an engaging and entertaining show.
So students were very busy this month with the midterm season being upon them. It felt like a long week and a half, but they are finally over, and we appreciate all the studying and hard work students put into them.
Tickets for BASH's Spring Musical, The Hunchback of Notre Dame, are now on sale. Tickets for Thursday, February 29th through Sunday, March 3rd, can be purchased online at the Boyertown Music website. We encourage you to get their tickets now before they sell out, and many of the students that were here previously singing are in the musical. So you've seen their talent.
Okay. So with senior year comes college applications for some, which can be a very stressful time. However, we are in the final stretch of application deadlines, and I just want to remind students to fill out any remaining financial aid or scholarship applications.
The BASH Counseling Department has announced the opportunity for 90 juniors to attend the Spring Berks County College Fair taking place at Alvernia University on March 5th. Students interested in attending must submit the Google form that was sent out this month.
Okay. So thank you all so much for listening tonight, and we hope you all have a great rest of your night.
There's no one signed up for public comm period number one, so at this time, we'll be looking for the approval meeting minutes for January 9th, 2024, as presented.
Ms. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
PFM Financial Advisors, presentation.
Just to refresh the board's memory, a few months ago, there was a parameters resolution that was approved by the board that allowed us to go out to market to see what refunding opportunities the district would have. PFM is going to present on the results of the refunding.
Good evening. My name's Brad Remig with PFM. With me is Ken Phillips from Raymond James. He played a critical part in this refinancing as well. Before the meeting, before, in your place, I put a sheet of paper that summarizes the results from the bond refinancing. When I was here, November 14th, I believe it was, some of you may remember, we were anticipating and hoping to save a couple hundred, $200,000 on this refinancing. If you look at the sheet of paper before you, there's column number four. It's kind of in the orange box, and you can see what we were able to achieve was over a million dollars of savings from the refinancing. So you might say, "Well, what happened? What made that, made that occur turn out to be that great of a result?" Well, there are a couple of things. First, as Patty mentioned, the board. The board put the resolutions in place to be able to let us react quickly, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second. So kudos to the board for getting us to a position where we could execute on relatively quick notice. So thank you for that. Second is your credit rating. You have a strong credit rating, and Patty Dennet-Cola does a fantastic job representing the district on these rating calls. She prepares the information succinctly. She gets on the call. There's about an hour call that Ken and I were both on, just listening to the, you know, listening to the way that she responds and has all the information, you know, to be able to give the rating agency. Because a credit rating, as you may know, is much similar to you all having a credit score. So the better the credit score, the better of an interest rate you might get on a loan or whatever. Same case for the school district. The better your credit rating, and the better that you present these information to the rating agency, the lower the interest rate. So that was a contributing factor, a large contributing factor. So I wanted to recognize Patty for her hard work to prepare for that. Obviously, we got some market improvement. That was another thing. From when I saw you in middle part of November till the middle part of December, Ken and I were just talking about it. Interest rates in the muni market fell about three quarters of a percent. It had a lot to do with people thinking that the Federal Reserve was done raising rates, and they might forecast rates to come down during 2024. We'll see if that really comes to pass, but as you can imagine, the market prices a lot of these things in. And so we were able, again, with Patty's work, with the board putting the things in place, to be able to jump in and lock the rates and these savings just before the holiday break. And then the last piece I'll just mention is, you know, we thought we did pretty good execution between Raymond James, Jeff's team at Fox Rothschild did an outstanding job getting timely papers together and all the things that we needed to present ourselves well. And then, you know, obviously, the PFM team, we were helpful as well. So it was really good group effort by all those involved. So when Patty mentioned coming to the meeting and provide the results, I'm like, "I'll be happy to come to see that this, this all come together really favorably for the school district." So with that, I didn't know if Ken had any comments or anybody had any questions for me, but that's kind of where it looks at. Yes.
First, what rate did we wind up on this?
I don't have the number right in front of me. Probably can dig it out.
I have it.
Yep. But it is a fixed rate, to your point. And the other thing that we did was we didn't extend the term of the, of the bond or anything. We kept the same final maturity. We just replaced the higher rates with the lower rates, so that was good. We didn't stretch things out. We're paying it off in the same amount of time. We've just reduced the interest rate.
Okay. And then the money we saved is net fees?
Net of everything.
Money we're saving is net fees?
Net of fees, and also when you reduce your payments on bonds, if you're getting plan con reimbursement, there's, since the payments are lower, there's less reimbursement from the state. It's just a pro rata thing, and this is net of that as well. So this is true local dollars to the district. And you can see we've spread it out over the term of the loan, a little bit more in this budget year, but you can see that savings have been spread over the term of the, of the bond. What's that?
3.71.
3.71 was the interest rate. So there's really no action. This is just an informational report, and thank you all for your, for your time.
Treasurers' Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting to you a few highlights from the December 2023 Treasurers' Report. For local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $89,226.29. Earned income tax collection was approximately $867,055.73. And our transfer tax collection was approximately $78,271.29. For state revenue, PDE retirement subsidy was $1,030,522.94. PDE basic education funding is $2,726,265. And pupil transportation subsidy was $1,386,454. And for December expenditures, salaries and benefits accounted for approximately 71% of our monthly expenditures. That concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions? Good. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under the superintendent's consent agenda, I am looking for the board of directors to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Questions, discussion? I'll second.
Ms. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under the superintendent's itemized agenda, the fall athletic bid...
Next, under the superintendent's itemized agenda, um the fall athletic bid, I'm looking for the board's school directors to approve the twenty twenty four for fall athletic bid as presented.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Pannarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, uh for the board of school directors to approve the Deva Par Consulting Service proposal as presented.
Is that something that, yeah, don't we need to review that or see what that's all about? I'm sorry. There's a lot of moves. I was just concerned that we weren't going to have a discussion, that's all.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I was just wondering exactly how is that funded?
It would be coming through our budget. We would be supporting it through um dollars that weren't expended um from the lack of administration being down one, savings that are there, um just funds that we are able to to be able to put this into place to support and and help our our high school administration be successful.
So I'm just a little concerned about um how necessary it is, I guess. Wouldn't other principals and administration be advising them and helping them through?
Well, because of the newness of our administration and there is no one that is um working in our administration currently that has operated as a high school principal, it's really important to be able to be able to give advice in that direction of running a high school, building a schedule the size that it is. Um and the person, the the supports are to to provide ongoing support when, you know, we may not be available. Um just to, you know, be able to, you know, bring them along and and make them, you know, be as successful as possible. Um it's not that, you know, myself or Mr. Sout wouldn't be available for other opportunities, but this would be able to have somebody there specifically maybe on a Friday where Mr. Sout or Mrs. Landis or one of our other administrators, you know, who have been been taken away from the work that they are doing on a regular basis, can really, you know, just be able to continue to um provide mentorship, to be able to guide as, you know, the high school would require. Um it's it's just, you know, a an added support. We sat and met together. It was um brought to the attention of the high school administration. They've, you know, felt like this would be, you know, a a great asset for them moving forward.
Okay, so we I'm I don't believe we've done this before. I'm not I'm not saying that in a negative way.
No, typically what we I had proposed in the past would be to actually put a person in there every single day during the gap time.
Yeah.
Whereas the supports then go away and you still have the new administrators who are still learning. Like, you know, Mr. um Benner, who's coming aboard, has not worked in an administrative role at all. Just to be someone else to answer the questions that Mr. Sparks may not be able to always get to. Um someone to be able to bounce something off of that, you know, it it if you've not been in that high school and and Mr. Sout can, you know, um speak at at any point, things are moving um at a very fast speed pace all the time. There are are many things that are going on and it's nice to have someone that doesn't have anything else to have to focus on other than to provide those supports to to that admin- administration.
So, okay, so they're on site all the time?
Not all the time, up to fifteen hours.
There's also a phone consulting you do also?
Correct, but the but combined of onsite and consulting on the phone would not exceed fifteen hours.
How how are you going to know when it's time to stop? What what's what's going to be your measurement that this is this is successful?
I I believe our measurement would be when our administration is saying, number one, giving me feedback or Mr. Sout feedback with respects to how are things going? How do you see this working for you? Do you believe that this is 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 meaningful support? Um, you know, do you believe that this need should, you know, continue beyond, you know, um, you know, a month, two months, et cetera, to to really be able to get feedback and and if it's not something that is, you know, operating um for them and they're not, if they're not utilizing it, we're not paying for it for anything.
Okay, so you're looking at like weekly progress reports, biweekly?
I I think that that would be a way to connect with them and to sit and meet with the group. Uh or it's not even a group. It's an individual. It's a retired um uh individual who was a sitting seated superintendent. She, you know, worked as a a high school principal. Um she's uh brings curriculum perspective. It's it's just a wealth of knowledge to be able to have at your fingertips.
Not not that the board really steps in to evaluate these, what we're doing, but you're going to be reporting to the board on how it's going?
I I certainly can if that would be a request.
I would like to hear it on how, because it's since this especially since it's a new initiative, uh which I think is industry type standard thing, that uh it would be nice to hear back from from the administration on how this is progressing and if we're actually seeing benefit from it and what those benefits are. Uh also, would it benefit the district to actually backfill in some places and some of this, some of the people that we've moved in that didn't get any type of training at all, that maybe something could be done with them also? I don't know if that's required or anything, but would there be benefit? And that would be, you have to look at that by the benefit of the people you're doing it with.
A- absolutely. We we can certainly evaluate that. Yes. Mrs. Dieroff.
I read over the contract and I don't see any dollars and cents in there what it's the maximum would be. It just gives a date from January to June and we're oh, three quarters of the way through through January already. Uh and I don't know, we're we're not going to be in school in June, so I I think we should have some type of monetary figure in there. It's a, to me, it's an open contract. It tells you how many hours they can use a week.
Mm-hmm.
And it tells you uh
With the cost of the
Every fifteen minutes of like for emails or whatever. So I don't know if that's added on to the cost per week that you're telling us or what. The it the contract is too open.
So so they it would be a hundred and forty nine dollars and fifty cents per hour that would be charged in fifteen minute increments up to the total of fifteen hours per week. And uh beyond that, I'm not sure, you know, with respects to students not being in school, it's not about necessarily the students being in school, but being able to provide those other supports with, you know, um finishing out a school year, completing reports, uh, you know. What else, Mr. Sout? Scheduling, yeah, I I that that would be, that that would be pretty much um underway, but and should be finalized by that point. But, you know, definitely being able to to provide that type of support. Um so as far as it being open, I again, I think we'll evaluate what the necessity and how long, you know, they would need and and what the hours would have to, you know, would we need fifteen hours every week um for how long?
Well, that part's okay, but I I'm not used to okay, a contract without a maximum amount in there. You're saying so many hours a week, so why can't you put a maximum dollars and cents in there? If you're confi- if you're confiding it to fifteen hours a week.
I I could do the math and and put that out there as well, um, you know, without. Ms. Dennet-Cola, can you do one forty nine fifty times fifteen? Think it's two thousand?
What is if you don't?
Right, and Then it's less, yeah. You only get charged for the amount of time that you're
And the max is fifteen, so there's nothing over the max?
No.
Yeah, I mean.
One forty nine fifty times fifteen.
Twenty two fifty.
Twenty two, two thousand two hundred
Forty.
Right, and and I don't I don't know what the maximum would be as far as, you know, how long we would, you know, need the to have those supports, but Mrs. Scott. I I don't have a a maximum amount, Mrs. Dieroff, and it was, you know, not capped because quite honestly, just wanting to make sure that the high school administration is as successful as possible moving forward.
Like, I'm seeing a one forty nine fifty per hour on site?
Correct, and it's a little bit less, like nine dollars less if it's offsite.
Now, is that all part of the fifteen hours for a week?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that's what I was, that's what I meant.
Yes, it it is all to all part of it, and again, it's only building in fifteen minute increments.
Do you think it would be wise to put a cap on this and if we need to go over that cap amount? Because we are working within a budget. Um you can come back to the board and say, hey, you know, we're we're going to need more if that's if that's something that's we can do. But do you know how much we have aside for this?
So if we look at what's left for the remainder of the school year, it's approximately twenty one weeks if my quick count is correct. That would equate to forty seven thousand, ninety two dollars and fifty cents based upon fifteen hours per week for twenty one weeks um at the one forty nine fifty. I think it would be prudent, as I'm not sure who brought up about regular progress reports, um that the administration can share with the board to determine if it's being effective and it's truly being effective to um enhance the abilities of our administrators, not just take the work away, if that makes sense. And I think that's the intent, to enhance the ability of our administrators and regular progress reports um could be shared with the board. So we're certain that 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 is happening and it's a useful spend of the dollars.
Yeah, I I think that's wise too. And and our administration, our cabinet will be working with them as well and meeting with them and doing
That that would be clearly
Not with the consultants, but with the with the team over there.
Right, correct.
Okay, I I have lots of concerns on this. Uh one, that there is no cap on it. I mean, this could go on forever and ever and I can't do that. Second is, how do we know that this organization, this company, is going to be guiding our principals, assistant principals, whatever, in the same direction you want them to go?
Well, they do They do work with us. Um we are very familiar with the staff that works for this consulting group. Um we evaluated whether or not we wanted to go and put someone in there in the interim while we have no one there, which would cost, which would exceed the forty seven thousand dollars um that we would, you know. If we if we say a cap right now for forty seven thousand dollars to the end of the year, um that is, you know, a a great savings in comparison to when we have put uh staff members in there to support the the office or the administration. So do I, how do I know that they will um provide them the supports that we would provide? Well, because they're going to be following policy, they're going to be following school code, they're going to be giving them direction in the proper utilization of uh and communication in scenarios where Mr. Sout or I may not be right there, you know, to be able to answer the question or to react or respond. I I just have a, I'm very comfortable with the the company and and the people who are working there.
I think I would be more comfortable going on a month by month basis and seeing what they're providing us. And if at the end of the month, you're comfortable with what they've done,
Mm-hmm.
our team still feels they need more help, more support, then let's do another month. I I just don't want to keep it open ended like this.
Okay, I mean, any contract can be dissolved. I mean, this is an agreement. It can be dissolved at any time.
That if, okay, say something happens and it's not the way you wanted it and you said, hey, we need to stop this. We can stop it immediately?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Soltanic, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but I I'd still like to see it go on a month by month basis rather than open ended till the end of the school year.
Okay.
I just can't see
We will provide, I will provide feedback to the to the board in the newsletter, letting everyone know how um they are working out and how our administration feels um with the supports that they're receiving. And I will, you know, alert you at that point. That will continue for the next month and, you know, go from there. Yeah. Mrs. Kratz.
I just have two questions. Um first, have you talked to any other school districts that have utilized this consult, these consultants? And two, did we look at any other consulting firms?
I have not um spoken to any other school districts who have um utilized the these individuals or this consulting company. The um people who are in this consulting company are uh people from the county, from Berks County, who have worked um at the Berks County Intermediate Unit, superintendent at uh Schuylkill Valley School District, uh assistant superintendent within the Wilson School District. They're people that I have worked with uh in the county. Um I didn't realize that they were uh that they had a consulting firm together. Um our so our solicitor provided me that information and he knows other schools that have utilized them. I'll let you speak. Oh, I'll stop.
Okay. The answer is yes. Uh the Allentown School District has used them extensively and it is my understanding they've been pleased with the services. Uh it is also my understanding that the Harrisburg School District has used their services. And one of the principals is the former superintendent in the Harrisburg School District uh who has uh put together the company.
So again, what would your, what in speaking with them, what is, what do you want them to focus on?
I want them to focus on being able to build capacity with our new administration who have not worked in this position for an extensive amount of time under a, you know, new high school principal. I I would like them to be able to, you know, help them to provide supports, especially with how to go in and do observations within the classroom, sit with them, walk them through those key parts of of supervision, uh to be able to provide insight on our count, on our our schedule building because they, the the individual that will be supporting us has um in-depth experience. It's a love of what she did as um a building principal. Um to continue to be able to, you know, sit with them when they have to meet with parents, you know, uh to just to pro- provide that that bit more of guidance and feeling like they are supported and that they're not um guessing at what, you know, needs to be done. And there's not enough time for our administration to always be there because we all have, you know, you know, full plates. We we have a lot, you know, going on. So wanting to make sure that we're we're providing those supports and and helping them to be successful.
Okay, so it looks like they would be there two days a week if you're saying fifteen hours. They would stay a full day.
There would be one full day that that the administration would love for them to be. Fridays are days where things really start to, um, you know, sometimes just
Yeah, spin out of control.
Correct, and uh, you know, just knowing that they have someone there to be able to, you know, provide that support and, yeah, help the administration along.
Will they be giving you feedback of what's going on?
Mm-hmm. We will be meeting with them routinely. Uh we meet in a Zoom meeting, check on um how things are progressing. Um they were, you know, very much involved in creating a plan on how to, you know, bring and 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 meet success.
Okay, if they have a plan, then they should have an idea of how long maybe it would take.
Well, not necessarily. We're talking about, you know, new people learning new roles and, um, you know, we continue to learn in our positions all the time. Not that we have to have somebody underneath us, you know, the whole time, but I would I would say that, you know, with our newest administrator starting um mid-February, he's going to need a little bit of time getting acclimated to the the building and understanding, you know, the supervision part of of your job as, you know, being an educational leader, running faculty meetings, you know, how to put an agenda together for a faculty meeting, making sure you're covering all those topics. So it's it's it can be very involved and then at the same time, you have twenty, you know, one hundred students in the building. Mr. Updegrove.
Yeah, I was wondering, how long has this uh consulting company been in business then?
Do you know, Mr. Soltanic, that they've been about just just about a year, maybe?
Yeah, it's approximately a year.
One year.
But but the principals in the company have are longstanding uh individuals associated with education.
Very respected individuals.
Respected.
Yeah, they are.
Yes.
They are.
Sorry, so if if we, if this isn't approved, you're saying we'll have to hire someone in-house to do these things?
No, I'm not saying that we would have to hire anyone in-house. I'm just saying it would not put um would not provide or lend itself to supporting the administration with as much support, you know, having somebody that's always there. They're they're more or less on on call for them. Whereas, you know, if you're trying to call me, you may not get me right away. If you're trying to get ahold of Mr. Sout, you might not get him right away. But they, you know, should be available. And if they have a schedule and they're coming, you know, to be there you know, to be there all day on a Friday or whatever day, you know, maybe it's three days, you know, five days, three hours, et cetera, that they know that they have this extra, you know, person and with their expertise to support them.
I just don't, I'm just not sure, like, why the support is now needed. I mean, in the past, we've hired other people to these positions, but we don't have a consulting firm to have to help them through...
The consulting firm is working in kind of the same way as when we've hired people, but there's not, there really isn't anyone there to support right now that wants to come into the high school to work. We have tried to lend ourselves to, you know, finding someone. So, this is the next way. I think, you know, maybe you can...
In some respects, it is less of a commitment. Remember, when we hire somebody in this environment, they are often tenured or job-protected. You have much more latitude in, if it doesn't go well, to say goodbye in a consulting agreement. Plus, you don't pay Peasars' benefits or Social Security on those monies.
So, just from my understanding, are they essentially support or onboarding?
Support. They're building capacity of our, by onboarding...
It almost sounds like they're training our people. So, that sounds like onboarding.
They're providing them direct supports with the things that they're, they have to do, like, you know, supervision. You know, they, there's how many teachers at the high school and between the four administrators, I guess they have, what, about 30 teachers that they supervise? They go in and evaluate. So, that's, you know, understanding the Danielson process, understanding the post or the pre and the post observation, the observation. It's just, you know, really being able to bring someone along with the job attributes that you need to do and assume as an assistant principal.
When they're writing their reports and things like that, is that being paid for that time, too, or is that part of the fee, the hourly fee?
They wouldn't be charging us for, there's no reports that they're going to be writing. They're going to be sitting and supporting. So, if the administrator is the first time going into a classroom to observe, they're going to be working directly with them.
So, the progress, the weekly reports will just be something that you do?
Something I would put together. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Nyman?
Since you said they're going to be here at least one day a week, are we paying traveling time to them?
No. No travel.
Okay. I just need to be sure of that.
So, if someone was hired, like, what position is that?
If someone was hired, it's not a position. What we have done in the past is if we had a vacant assistant principal, we typically would try to find a retired assistant principal, someone that would come in and work and be in that position until the new person, you know, had arrived. But then, you know, with the newness, again, Mr. Houck, this is his first year, Mr. Venner, this is his first year, Mr. Bergy, this is, he's just finishing up his first year of being in this position. So, it's really to just provide those supports that you typically wouldn't get if somebody came in and sat in that position, then they left. Then they're gone, and that's it.
So, basically, this is a unique situation because we have so much newness.
It is. And that is the only reason why I'm bringing forth, you know, working with an outside organization that would be able to lend its experiences, you know, to our staff.
Being that Mr. Brophy asked that we'd get the board kept in touch, I think we also should put in there probably the dollar amount that we spent so far with on the report.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. That's why we have nowhere we're at.
Sure. Thank you.
So, we see this going till June. Do you see them having to be here in September with the opening of the school? Because, again, that's going to be different than what they're going to see in April, May, and June, and even March, coming in to open the high school back up with all the scheduling and just...
Sure, Mrs. Scott.
Okay.
I'm really not sure. I believe we need to see how well our administration, you know, moves along right now. And that would be something that I certainly would come back to and share with the board if we did believe that we needed a little bit more. But the summertime does lend itself to be able, for the rest of us, to kind of rally together and make sure that they're up to speed with the opening of the school year.
Okay. Okay.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes?
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
No.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for a motion to accept the personnel agenda as presented.
Zawada moves. I have a quick question. Have we figured out anymore about the RO2C? Did we find out if we could use other services than the Navy?
I know that Mr. Hahn is currently continuing to look into that. Do you have anything to...
Yes, I met with Mr. Hayman last week. To his understanding, we could use Coast Guard, Air Force, or Navy. Not Army, not Marines.
Is he aware of anybody that would be interested in coming here?
We've had that discussion, so that's going to be ongoing in regards to once we open up the position.
One quick question, though. For that position, they're, what, mostly retired? Do they have to have any teaching-type degrees and stuff like that, or can we just, you know, get somebody that's under 25 or 20 and they want to be involved with our students?
It's typically a retired, retired individual. No teaching cert or no certification from PD is required.
I'll ask my usual question. Are any of these positions new that are on this?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Before you tonight, we have, again, another 135 years of service of people leaving, retiring or whatever. And again, I'll ask my standard question. We have another janitor leaving, and I just wish we'd find out why everybody leaves. Thank you.
And I will be conducting exit interviews with Mr. Moser, so I'll get some of that information I can share, if he accepts one.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no one signed up for public comment period number two, so we could go on to board comment.
Yeah. At the previous meeting, the BCTC, the kids now are, actually, now they're working on something for the space station up there. As of the last meeting, they had, if you ever see the space, the International Space Station, if you ever look at the handles inside the space station that the student, yeah, that the astronauts have to hold on to, they were made up here in Oley that are in that unit that they made. And they were making something else, and it's not top secret, I guess it's a cup holder or something to keep the stuff in the cups from coming out. Yeah, that's, I don't know if that's top-secret stuff or not, but I'll find out. I'm going to the meeting tomorrow night, and I'll find more out.
Just a special thank you to Allison Moyer and the student, for all she's done. I'm sure that has really helped our special needs students out. I'm sure they appreciate it also.
I just want to say thank you to Liliana and Lexie for coming tonight, and I look forward to working with you for the rest of the school year.
And I want to thank administration for the gift. I think, I love gifts like that, so that's very appreciated. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for all they do for the district, the students here, Allison presenting the young lady and her achievements that she's doing. And I believe, I had asked for information, and I was told it was turned over to the board president and should have been discussed tonight, so I don't know where we are on that information that I was not given. The other thing I wanted to say was, on snow days, I've had quite a few calls, and maybe the next snow day we'll let the janitors work from home. Thank you.
I agree. I want to thank Mrs. Moyer for the presentation. It was amazing tonight, and I do want to thank the administration for the gifts. I very much appreciate it.
I have nothing to add.
Upcoming meeting dates, February 13th and February 27th. Both meetings will be here at the Ed Center, beginning at 7 o'clock.